Accustomed to in the.
Okay, we're gonna get ready to call the meeting to order. First of all, thank you all for being here again on your this nice warm day. We appreciate it. First of all, we can go ahead and get the roll call.
Trustee Herren, here. Trustee Montez.
Here.
Trustee Sierra.
Here.
Trustee Silver.
Here.
Trustee Slover. Vice President Hill.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
Thank you.
Want to stand? Moment, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion for the minutes, move the minutes.
I have a correction or or or. So I don't know if you want, I'll move to adopt if I can still make a motion to or make a correction.
Okay. What is that?
A second. Yeah, um, under the section, um, eight point six, the land acquisition. I was hoping that we would have included that there were no, um, requirements that came with that land acquisition prior, you know, so stipule, no land stipulations of what we had to do, that we had any obligations.
Hmm. Good point.
Just in case anybody's looking at minutes from the when we're in the future.
Is that correct?
That would be my correct.
Okay. Was there a motion?
I I.
One second.
You second.
Okay, question? Roll call.
Trustee Herren.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover. Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
All right, motion carries. Okay, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna make a little change here. Remember Superintendent Human Resources up? Ms. Chalise, bye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You got me, thank you. I'm happy to be here today. Um, we get this opportunity to kick off our summer where the contributions fund awards their scholarships, um, to our full-time staff, not full-time, our staff children. So the twenty twenty twenty-five scholarship recipients have been selected. Each year, prospective candidates submit detailed applications that include academic performance, career aspirations, personal goals, and involvement in extracurricular activities. The employee contribution fund carefully reviews all submissions and selects recipients for both the contribution fund scholarship and the board scholarship. We are pleased to announce the following four students who have been chosen to receive an eight hundred dollar scholarship. Some of the young people couldn't be here today, but they were so sweet to send notes of gratitude and thanks. I will read those. But I will start first with the recipient that was able to be here today. Savannah. Savannah Graycheck. She will be attending the University of Wisconsin, Whitewater. She will be pursuing her degree in business management. That was my degree. She is the daughter of Nicholas Graycheck, and he is the vehicle equipment service technician in our Parks Division. Congratulations, Savannah.
I'd just like to thank the contributions committee for helping support me further my education. Thank you.
The other three recipients, the first one is Ellie Cahill. She is currently attending Illinois Wesleyan University. She is pursuing her bachelor's degree in nursing. She has stated that her goal is to become a nurse practitioner. She is the daughter of Emily Cahill, and I will give, I told Ellie that I will give your check to your mother. And she said she would make sure she gets it from her. Ellie did write a note of thanks. I will read it. I am writing to express my sincere gratitude for being selected as a recipient of the Peoria Park District Scholarship. I apologize for not being able to attend the park board meeting as I will be out of town. Nevertheless, I am very thankful for your support of my college education. This scholarship will be a great help to me in pursuing my education goal, educational goals by receiving my BSN at Illinois Wesleyan University. I am committed to continue to excel in my academic pursuits. Thank you again for your generosity and belief in my potential. I am very grateful for the support you have chosen to offer me. Sign Ellie Cahill. So our next scholarship recipient is Bailey DeLa. Bailey would be be attending the St. Francis Medical Center College of Nursing. She will be pursuing her Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. She is the daughter of Jason Winged. He's the Assistant Manager Bradley Park with our Parks Division. Bailey stated, I am so thankful to be chosen and thank you for reaching out to me with such great news. It is a blessing to receive this scholarship. Thank you so very much. So we want to celebrate her. And our final scholarship is Tyler Loftus. He will be attending Bradley University. He will be pursuing his degree in engineering. He is the son of Scott Loftus, Superintendent of Recreation. Tyler writes, I would like to thank you for selecting me as a recipient of the twenty twenty-five Peoria Park District Employee Contribution Fund Scholarship. This generous, generous eight hundred dollar scholarship will go a long way to help me pay for my education as I begin my college career at Bradley University this fall. I will be pursuing my degree in electrical engineering, which will allow me to build on my academic accomplishments and interest in math and science. The Peoria Park District has played an important role in shaping who I am today through my involvement in youth sports, lessons, summer camps, and now by supporting the start of my college career. Thank you again for recognizing my hard work, dedication, and academic accomplishments. Sincerely, Tyler Loftus. The total amount of scholarships given this year was three thousand two hundred dollars. The contributions committee is made up of only of all park district staff. That fund does not connect to the park district budget. Employees decide to give two dollars and fifty cents out of each check to go into this fund. This fund not only gives scholarships. This fund also sends flowers and bereavement to family members who may be in the hospital or who have passed away. They also do memorials based on what the employee has stated. Another great part about this fund, they give to charity. The bylaws of the contribution fund has to give half of total donations by December thirty-first to charities, and they vote on the charities they give each year. This year, they voted to give money to Cancer Society, to give more money to the scholarship fund, and the Humane Society. This fund, I sit with this to share this fund with Scott Loftus. He's not on the scholarship part. He's on the other part. I want to make sure I say it there. And we have other members of our staff that participate as committee leaders. They are Angela Bland. She works at the Riverplex. Brianna Cobb, she is here, a DIA director. Nick Sutter's Downs, you'll see him upstairs. He's our recreation manager. Alona Mason, she is Assistant Manager Spall Parks. And Tom Miller, who was the manager out of the summer park, and Karen Rogers, who is, um, the Administrative Assistant at HISRA. I want to thank the committee for their wonderful job with this year's scholarship selection. They take it very seriously what they do, and they have other plans for the committee and the fund for this year. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
President Johnson, I do have a question. Ms. Chalise, did I hear you correctly that this fund contributes, um, financial support for bereavement purposes?
Uh huh.
Okay.
So if someone's in hospital or someone passes away, certain family members and the bylaws of this fund, they, the employee can say, send flowers to my mother or plant or whatnot.
And this is a personal point of clarification. Is that courtesy also extended to members of the boards?
This is the employee fund.
Okay, got it.
They give out their own paycheck to this fund, and they have their own account separated from the park district. But the board does play a part in the scholarship portion that was written before my time here because there are members who don't contribute the two dollars and fifty cents. And the board decided, it's a previous my time here, that they want to set aside an equal amount to give to any student who applies that their parent may not be a part of the fund, so they have an opportunity to get a scholarship too.
Got it. The reason, the reason why I ask is, I mean, it's no secret that I've, I've went through my fair share of, uh, bereavement, if you will.
Yes, sir.
And so I know how much that means, um, and how much the park district does show up for everyone who's connected to the district. Uh, so of course, due to my personal experience with my time being on this board, um, I just wanted to underscore just how much I know I appreciated that, and I can only imagine how that impacts other people's lives. What I want to follow with is congratulations to the scholarship recipients. Also, congratulations to the, um, committee and gratitude toward the committee too, but also kudos to the stewardship of the district. Not only are we supporting the youth of our full-time employees or employees, um, but we've also figured out a way, um, at the direction of Executive Cahill to support the education of our employees as well, um, through recent budget allocations that we have made in the last, most recent last budget, if I'm not mistaken. So to have that holistic educational support is very impressive as an institution. Congratulations again.
And I, hopefully, um, in a couple of more meetings, we will be communicating through a report that we do have our first full-time person who has applied for the tuition reimbursement, and she'll be starting her accounting degree pursuit this fall.
Looking forward to it.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this sign, we're gonna have citizens to request to address the board. Uh, citizens could come forward, please. Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Linda Watkins, and I just wanted to speak of my experience. I took my granddaughters over to the new park a couple weeks ago. And the park is lovely. The kids loved it. They were anxious to get there, but it was a little disappointing. I witnessed a lot of bullying, and I witnessed, uh, a lot of parents that had to, we had to go with our children as they tried to enjoy the park because of all the bullying. There were a lot of, uh, like, middle school age kids there that were not using the park for what it's for. Um, there were adults that was there, but they were not with their children. Uh, I saw a lot of red cups, and I didn't think that there was juice alone in those cups. Those parents were pretty much over there enjoying themselves while their children were going through the park and kind of like bullying the kids that were there that was trying to enjoy it. And I think that as parents, we should be able to sit back and watch our kids run through and have fun without us having to chaperone them to each little part of the park that they were trying to enjoy. You know, there were, uh, young men that were hiding under monkey bars because my granddaughter asked to go to the monkey bars. So as I went to the monkey bars with her, there's like ten kids all bunched up under the monkey bars, and you got young ladies running over there and getting up under there with them. That's not what I'm accustomed to my grandkids seeing. You know, and as I stood there to try to watch one go to play on the news. Um, I don't know how you to describe it, but you get on it and you swing over and across back. One gets on one part. I got two big kids and my other granddaughter trying to bully her to get off so they can get on, you know. I don't know how this will, this matter will be taken care of, but we shouldn't have to chaperone our kids to each little piece of this park for them to be comfortable to play in. And they was ecstatic to get there, but they couldn't enjoy it because it was just too much. It was too, too many big kids. And when you got teenage girls walking around with purses and all this and on the phone and all this profanity, you did not come to the park to enjoy yourself. You came to the park for commotion. That's what I see. I worked for the school district for twenty years. I seen a lot of, so please believe. I know when they're there to have fun and when they're not, and that was a lot of not to have fun. It was to cause a lot of chaos. So we don't live in the neighborhood of Glen Oak Park, but we do like to patronize it. We go to the ice cream shack. We usually come to Glen Oak, sit and have ice cream and let them play. And we gonna continue to come. If I have to keep chaperoning to each little area, guess that's what I'll have to do, but the parents really need to do their part. Those kids really shouldn't be in that park if they're not over there to enjoy the park like the kids really want to do. And it's just too many little kids to have in that environment watching all of that. So I just want to address my experience. I'm a whole lot cooler than I was the day that I was there. Believe that. A whole lot cooler, but I just didn't think that my grandkids should have saw that, and they still speak on it. So I just want to make that known to you guys, and I love the park again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have another, um, caller on the phone. She couldn't be here, but she also gave me a call concerning some issues at Glen Oak Park. Just a moment, see if I can get her. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Can anybody hear her? Can you also, uh, you're on speakerphone at our board meeting. Could you express some of your concerns?
Yes, my name is Alice Jackson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you, I'm sorry. Could you introduce yourself first?
My name is Alice Jackson, and I also was at the Juneteenth. And where I was sitting at, I can see the stage, but I wasn't at the bottom. I was at the top across the fence. And where I was sitting at, it really wasn't too many people there, but all of a sudden, these kids got to running around. And next thing I know, when I looked up, the police was behind these kids. So I'm an elderly person, and I had to get up and leave. I didn't even get a chance to finish watching the whole show, so I was upset about that because I don't understand how these kids just come out here and just keep doing the most. Because anything could have happened within that night. It could have been shooting and hurting anybody. Elderly people that's out there that can't move, kids that can't move fast. And that kind of took me somewhere with that when I seen them kids running and I seen the police behind them.
Okay.
And that really took me somewhere.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I said I was gonna talk to Robert about it, and I did, just that.
Okay. Well, yes, I, I'm letting the board, the partners, know some of your concerns.
That's fine. I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. Um, any other citizens request to address the board? Anything online? Okay, thank you. Okay, we have now going to staff reports. Director, Director?
Good evening, everybody. Um, I know we have a lot to cover tonight, so I just want to quickly thank all of our, um, staff and volunteers in the community that was a part of our Juneteenth event last Thursday night. Um, certainly you'll see in communications, uh, some notes from, from, uh, NAACP and others who expressed their gratitude for the event and for the collaboration around that week. Um, we are in full swing. It's hard to believe that next week is July already. Um, summer is upon us for sure, certainly with the heat and otherwise. Um, we look forward to sharing more information with you as we proceed through the rest of the summer, but we do encourage everybody to, um, keep up with emails and track all the different things that we're sharing with you. I, I know that some of you will be going tomorrow to the State of the City address, and we look forward to hearing from the mayor then as well. So if I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
President Johnson, if I may, um, we're, we at the chamber are looking forward to seeing everybody at tomorrow's State of the City. But on a more, um, serious note, I really want to congratulate the entire Peoria Park District for taking a very intentional coordination when it came to the Juneteenth efforts across the city. That was a full week of very intentional shared space. That has never happened before. And as it pertains to the park district held event, particularly the drone show component, it absolutely transformed and impacted the lives of individuals who do not traditionally engage with our park system. Emily and I spoke about it before this meeting, but for us to share the experience being on two separate parks, and Emily, if I'm speaking for you or speaking out of terms, let me know, but to hear the physical gasp and breathtakingness of young people and more seasoned individuals, that just went to show how impactful that event was. And so while I know we will have conversation about the park and about the safety concerns that have been raised, I want to say that I am, um, I'm, I'm very impressed with the park district, and I'm very pleased with the impact that we were able to make as a collective. And I just want to also take the time to say thank you while I, um, expressing gratitude to the full in park district team, realizing that it does take a village. Thank you very intentionally to Chanel Hargrave Murray, who also took a very intentional lead on that initiative as it pertains to that full week of programming.
Yeah, I echo what, um, Trustee Sierra is saying, uh, that, uh, the ending where they, there was, there were adults and young people dancing, and you know, it's like the selection of the entertainment, especially at the end when people didn't really want to stop. So they had to forcibly make the band stop, but it was really, um, moving to see everybody doing that and then the drone show. So it was at least what was happening inside that bowl area was so positive and so community building, I think.
In some sense.
I, well, just echoing, um, you know, and thinking, you know, President Johnson for, I think we were kind of stuck with, uh, programming in Glen Oak, um, in a way that felt representative of the community that was there, and that's something that was well received. And I know we've kind of gone through this iteration of what is best. So I just, I commend your ability to, um, continue ideating with all of the parties involved. Um, can't thank them enough for being on board and allowing us to be a part of that. So it's something that I hope, you know, it continues, but I was down there dancing with Seven the night away. So she enjoyed it, um, and it felt, um, it's just something that I, it just really needed to feel and experience and see, and I just want to say thank the entire board, um, and staff especially for, for, um, bringing that to Glen Oak.
I bet she slept really well.
Oh, she did. She did. She.
I've never seen anybody wiggle all the time.
So if you see any shot, she was right at the front of that stage.
She was.
All night.
Steve?
Actually, we did ask um, for an assist from one of our partners to do um, we, they have the capacity with technology to check and it did report that there were fifty-five hundred people in the park that day.
That is, that is, yeah.
Awesome.
That'll be a little girl next year.
Yes.
I appreciated that whoever made the decision to, to choose the drone show over the fireworks. Uh, I thought that the, the drone show was a nice uh, um, I've, I've been in the park where they've had fireworks and you can't get anywhere near the lagoon. And I was able to get right up and get right under those drones. It was really a cool experience and I really enjoyed the drone show. It was a nice job, people that did the drones did a nice job.
I thought so too. Steve?
I thought it was a great event and from the start to beginning, it seemed like there were fifty-five hundred people in the park. I mean, people came early and uh, up to when I left, there were, it was pretty crowded and it, a nice group, great collaboration. Uh, a number of good events and uh, I think it's just a great start to an event. And so congratulations to Nick and to Chanelle and all the work, everybody that, I know there's more than that that contributed, but it seemed like they were going in three different directions uh, all night long and it was really well done. And so congratulations to you and your staff.
Yeah, I, I definitely want to have to say, give accolades to our staff. Um, particularly uh, Shalee's, oh Emily, my God, she just went nonstop. Had just the way she was just all over the place. Uh, Nick, uh, Jake, uh, Jennifer, all the pictures you took, Brianna, your, your input on when we were discussing the arrangements. Alicia, oh my God, I, so many of you have done so much to make this event. Uh, even uh, the, the chief, I saw him there and the work that he had to do. Uh, it, it's, it's just amazing, folks. The staff done a phenomenal job this year, I mean, it really was. I saw some things I never have seen before. I love, as you said, the kids coming down uh, in front and enjoying themselves, I saw Seven. And uh, uh, even uh, when the wife came down. Um, so I was ecstatic on one hand, but I do have an issue with our, with the continuing fights. I know people don't want to talk about those type of things, but we will discuss that a little later, but it was great. And I want my, I want to see our staff protected. I don't want to see any of you getting injured or anything of that nature, none of our staff, our police. But um, we, we can no longer, we can no longer put our head in the sand on that situation, we will discuss that later. But I want to say thank you again, accolades to the staff, you guys were phenomenal. Shalee's, you brought it home. You brought in Chanelle, you guys, you know, I saw you all bringing those little kids up front. And every time that the Emily, every time the um, uh, the drone came, that I've never seen people applaud.
Yeah.
They applauded, they, I mean, huge amount of people applauded those, those drones when they recognized the various individuals that was there. It just kinda, I don't know, some of you, when you have your skin, you get little pimples, skin kinda. I said pimples, it just in my back, my hair went up. It was phenomenal and I got a lot of calls and thoughts on that. So thank you again, once again, the park district has um, come, come today. You know, you've been at the forefront, you are the ones that made this possible. And on the corner, you know, we were on the cutting edge, you know, you went out there and made a new uh, a new box, so to speak. You know, and I, I congratulate you and the board, your support, so thank you. Yes, Mr. Uh.
Yes, uh, I uh, just one, one request for next year. Um, in terms of the food trucks, could we get an ice cream truck there? We were looking for ice cream and it was like, well, there's all these other, all the other good, good foods and stuff, but it was sort of like, eh, it was hot, hot enough day that it would have been, would have been nice to have ice cream too.
Now that we have a better idea of crowds, we'll be able to, to scale that appropriately. First time you never know.
Well, thank you so much, thank you all. Alrighty, any other questions? Okay, Chief of Police?
Hello?
The report's submitted, I'll take, first I can start with any questions that anyone has uh, with the uh, the report.
Um, Logan Park, Logan Park, you have any information on that?
Uh, this last Saturday's event?
Could, could, could you make it possible, you get a report on that, those incidents there, don't you?
I'm sorry?
You get a report on those ins, on, on?
Yes, the uh, the city conducted a report on this Saturday's event. If you're speaking to the one that was uh, listed in the media um, Saturday, they did do, conduct a police report on that and I did, I did look at that.
Did we get a report yet?
We have, I have the report from the city police department.
Okay, I would like each and every one of the board members get a copy of that. Is that possible? Of that report?
I think so, yeah, I believe we can make that happen.
Are we talking about the report, Logan Park on this crime report? Okay.
Talking about this last Saturday.
Okay, got it, okay.
Just, I just want the board, it's, it's time that the board be brought up to speed.
Okay.
On some things and um, I, I want them to get a report of each, every one of us to uh, look at this report. Yeah, okay, is that, is that possible?
Yeah, I believe, I believe we can make that happen, I know we're going to go into executive session, so I can do a little bit more uh, at that time as well, so.
Uh, do you have anything else to report?
The only other thing I'd like to report is um, making progress on filling vacancies and hiring uh, for vacant police officers. We've got, we're gonna be scheduling media, uh, I'm sorry, interviews next week. So hopefully to uh, we'll be able to expedite that process and uh, bolster our staffing. Uh, making progress on strategies uh, which we can speak about later and also some training opportunities uh, that we've been able to do as well. So good, good collaboration with the uh, with the city as well uh, for the Jubilee celebration and as was stated and pointed out, a lot of great teamwork, so.
Chief, did you have an opportunity to look at uh, May's report from last year and compare it to May's report of this year?
I, Mr. Sierra, I looked at the year-over-year numbers, I did not, I don't remember the details and it was two weeks ago when I looked at that, uh, because I wanted to look at a year-over-year comparison. Um, but I don't have the numbers uh, in my head right now.
So I know during our warmer seasons, I know I, I tend to ask the question about how crime tracks from this year compared to last year. So maybe if, you know, the next meeting, we can have that information, especially as we get ready to talk about July activity as well. I know that there'd be, that report will probably be a bit long.
Sure, and, and you're absolutely right, seasonality certainly plays into especially the parks. Um, and I don't think it's a problem for us to do a year-over-year comparison and I can kind of put it right into my report to the board. So we can, um, it's not always apples to apples, you know, not, not all incidents are the same, but it'll give us a, can give us a baseline.
Yes, so we can look at violent crime from last year compared to this year, non-violent crime, et cetera, and so forth.
I pulled up last year's report, you have this year's up?
Yeah.
Uh, last year was eight crime reports. Um, seven, seven non-crime.
Got it, so we're tracking ahead this year.
Yeah, I mean, I personally don't remember ever seeing a report that has so much in terms of not just crime, but everything. It's just like it's exponential growth, terrible things, yeah.
But I guess the question too is, is that it's being accounted for better now or is it, you know?
I do think there's a greater emphasis on documentation that is happening now than there was in the past, yes.
And, and I will say, I've made it a directive to the officers to document um, in part of building the business case, right? So even, even if we have a skirmish and there's a call, the officers arrive and everyone is dispersed, I still want that documentation. So, I mean, if, even if it's victim unknown, suspect unknown, um, I think we need to be as accurate as possible. Some of the other things that I look at, have looked at also for peak times, peak days, but also calls for service. Self-initiated, self-initiated activity can kind of ebb and flow depending on where you're at and just there's a lot of, lot more variables, but the number of times people are calling the police, um, we try to look at that as well.
So as it pertains to data that we already have been collecting year-over-year, similar to the mayor's safety network effort, you're saying that moving forward that you'll try to figure out how to compile some sort of year-over-year data?
Yes, so yes, exactly, so we, we had the data, I don't know that we've looked at it or used it before, but one of the things that I tried to do uh, when I came on board was to look at our utilization, right? So um, what are, what are our peak times of day? Um, where we have uh, police activity, whether it be a call or self-initiated activity, um, peak days of the week. Um, so I'm trying to look at, I'm trying to look at that and be more data-driven as well. So we know that there's going to be seasonality. Intuitively, you would think, um, I was totally wrong, I thought Friday would have been one of the busiest days for us. It actually isn't. Um, Saturday and Monday are our busiest days. We can, some different discussion and different things, but I'm sure Monday is a little bit of a holdover for weekend, staff coming in, finding things, reporting those things, those types of, you know, those types of incidents. But I am trying to look at all of that, so we're smarter about our deployment.
So maybe as a starting point, if you can provide some high-level data for us in terms of trends and then that can at least get our gears going as to what, what we could be looking for, if anything, more than what you're already providing.
Sure, and I'm also working uh, with the city and looking at some of the surrounding areas of some of our parks as well.
Thanks, Chief.
Absolutely, yes.
Mike, what, have you heard from the city about our event, were they happy generally with how things went?
Well, you know, so overall, it, it was a success. We didn't, we had, as, as President Johnson's pointed out, there, you know, we had some unfortunate skirmishes, fights, I would say. Um, but we had no serious injuries, uh, we had no medical calls. Um, overall, obviously the event was a huge success. Um, there's concerns, there's lessons learned, there's things that we, and again, as Ms. Cale said, it's the inaugural event. We didn't know, right, really what to expect. We knew that you wouldn't be able to see the event from the neighborhoods, but that also meant we brought more people into the parks because they had to be closer to see it. Um, you know, the, the uh, when it ended at the end of the night, I was shocked at how orderly the park emptied. Uh, some lessons learned there, we shut down traffic at eight forty-five. I think the next time, we'll probably shut down traffic a little bit earlier. Uh, we'll probably block off a few more ancillary streets that come off onto Prospect to get, because we started to get a bottleneck at Virginia because we closed it at McClure, just to get traffic going and moving. Um, we did have, we, we made allowances, which I was very pleased, obviously, that we didn't have to use them, but we had hardened uh, barriers for pedestrians because we knew we'd have a lot of pedestrians walking out with unfortunately the trends in the world of that happening. So there was, there was a lot of, a lot of things to celebrate on the security aspect of it. We had a lot of things going on for, for the entire day and then you throw in a senator's visit on top of that, that we, I think, pulled off very well. So um, as, as I always said, there's, we can always do better, uh, but we're looking at it, taking it seriously and obviously we want a successful family, safe environment.
Your staff and the uh, school district staff and the city staff.
Thank you very much, absolutely, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
One quick question, um, the, the one thing that seemed to be a little bit tough was the parking, you know, for the Juneteenth celebration. The street right there at Prospect along, you know, the sides of the park were all closed off. Is that necessary, is there some reason why that you had the, you know, that was done that way?
It is, it, it is for a few reasons in the, in the, it, it was pointed out, people got there early, so people claimed spots. So it is a safety, it is for safety of controlling the, the entrance and egress because the parks you can enter and exit anywhere. We worry about what people may have in cars, we worry about people running to cars. And then most, most importantly, leaving the night, if you have those cars there with the thousands of people that are leaving and the cars are exiting as well, we've mixed what we don't want to mix. Um, so that, if you, if you noticed, the parking lane north of the main entrance to the park on Prospect, we had the hardened barriers there because that is a very traversed um, egress especially. People filter in all day, everyone leaves at the same time. So that, that's why controlling that parking area is, is very critical.
So you provide two lanes to exit, you know?
Yes, so we, you know, you had, we, we, Republic was mainly for staff parking, we had a lot there, but you had, you know, we've got vendors that are leaving, I'm sure next year we'll have more vendors because the demand was there. Um, you've got, you still have people that live on Prospect, so you're contending with that. Um, so yeah, we're, we're, we're going to evaluate that. So um, we, we have a great footprint, we were able to use a lot of our planning from July third events. I mean, we'll shift it a little bit and uh, we'll continue to improve on it.
I hate to sound like a broken record, but I do think what Steve pointed out is absolutely important. I, I just want to underscore that the coordination between you all, Chief Boone with the school district and Chief Echidvia at the city police, it was, it was like none other that I had seen before. Years prior, you know, when it came to evening events in the park, I know last year Trust, or Vice President Hill and myself took a, a tour around the Upper Bowl particularly. And you saw the intentionality difference between this year and last year when it had come to evening coordination with public safety professionals. So that, I mean, that speaks very, very highly of yourself to be in the lead on that event.
Thank you, it was, it was a lot of great coordination in the fire department, uh, also, I don't want to leave them out because they ran the command post. We had mobile medics up there, uh, the street department from the city was absolutely instrumental in getting all of this done. It, there was a lot of choreography and, and I know it was brought up before, but our staff did, Nick and Jake and so many others did such a great job. We had a lot of meetings, uh, we did a lot of walkthroughs, um, but it, it, it paid off.
But you got that part cleared and I've never seen that before.
It worked. Anything else?
Do you have questions, Chief?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, new business, well, committee reports? Uh, new business, our uh, travel policy revision?
President Johnson, I'll move to approve travel policy revision.
Second.
Question?
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
So um, starting at the uh, the last page, the last paragraph, uh, we currently have uh, struck out if a third party is involved. I'd like to take this struck out uh, section and replace it with uh, if the amount in question is more than five hundred dollars and if a third party is involved and then uh, put the, the rest of the strikeout, remove the strikeout and, and uh, put that back in. And then finally, um, the uh, in the part that says that party should issue in writing a, if a third party is involved, including but not limited to an employee, childcare provider or medical provider, that party should, I'd like to replace, should with the word shall. So basically to restate this, uh, after the sentence, the trustee must submit to the board secretary within thirty days of the first day of the missed event a written and signed statement of circumstances that caused them to not attend the event, then insert if the amount in question is more than five hundred dollars and if a third party is involved, including but not limited to an employer, childcare provider or medical provider, that third party shall issue in writing a note documenting and corroborating the reason for the trustee missing the event. This may be a signed written statement or be an email from the third party's email and given to the board secretary. And then the rest is uh, the board shall consider this documentation in their decision in branding a waiver in part for an all of the expense payment by the trustee. So.
Trustee Silver, oh, I'm, were you finished?
Yes.
I will second the amendment.
Well, I have a motion on the floor, so.
It's an amendment.
It's an amendment to the.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm getting to that. So the reason why I won't accept the amendment to my motion is because your amendment does not um, is because your amendment does not, um, well, one, let me start from the beginning. When we first talked about this policy revision, it was clear by Attorney Day that without including the struck, strike, how do you say that?
Struck through.
Struck language, that if a trustee, um, were not able to attend an event, that the language that is currently provided, um, allows a trustee to submit third-party documentation in the event that they would choose to submit that. Kevin, or Attorney Day, am I correcting that understanding?
That's accurate.
Thank you. And so by not including that language does not prohibit a trustee from submitting third-party documentation. And so I think that by including the language, um, I mean, there's no difference according to what Attorney Day has just confirmed. Um, now, why, while, the second point that I have is the original, the original stance on this position after it was provided consensus to proceed up into this moment, which is now the third time that this board has reviewed this, is that it is my opinion, it is not only unfair to the trustee, but unfair to the trustee's affiliates, especially like employers, to have an expectation for them to indulge in something that oftentimes is separate from that trustee's professional life. For example, I could not imagine asking my full-time employer as one of the only two full-time working employees on this board to go on record and step into a political sphere that they would not otherwise support. And I know that from a personal experience because my employer, aparting my onboarding process, made it very clear that they will never and shall never indulge in political activity such as this partisan or nonpartisan. And so by including the shall language specifically, I think bottles necks, public service on this board. And so for those two reasons and others that I can continue on if you would like more, I will not accept the amendment to my motion.
So, uh, so just to be clear, um, you're, you're correct that, uh, you know, you have the option of providing third-party input.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the point of my including if the amount in question is more than five hundred dollars, what I'm trying to get at is, uh, to distinguish between the severity of the infraction. I agree, if I had gone to the, um, boot camp, for example, and, uh, had, at the last minute skipped out, um, if, you know, if I'd been required, you know, the, the way that we originally had it in there, you know, if I'd been required to provide a, uh, a third-party excuse, if I'd been sick and couldn't go to the boot camp, um, you know, that seems to me like it's more trouble than it's worth to go and collect the third-party information, uh, for, for a minor, uh, delay. But I think if you're talking about spending five hundred dollars of the taxpayer's money, uh, just because you didn't feel like going to something, um, that there we need to have an additional, um, it's not enough in that case, in my opinion, to just have, you know, the trustees say so that, oh, I couldn't go to this thousand-dollar event just because I, I had to work something, or I had a, uh, a doctor's appointment, or I had, I got a cold or something.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I, I've never witnessed a trustee just say that they don't want to go to something. I think that.
No, but if you say, hey, I had a cold or something, yeah, that's fine to, to skip out of. If the district is going to be out a hundred bucks, you know, sure, just sign a note and say, hey, I had a cold and I couldn't go. But if the trust, if the trustee has, says, hey, I can't go to this, and the district is out more than five hundred dollars, that I think deserves the second, the extra step that I'm asking for to go ahead and get corroborating evidence from the employer, the doctor, or whatever the reason was.
So the, I'm sorry, and then I'll, I'll end because again, my motion's made and I'm, I'm not going to amend my motion. But to say to, whether it's one dollar, five hundred dollars, or fifty thousand dollars, the fiduciary responsibility that we have is to safeguard the park district. And we all know that because we took an oath in oath of office. And I think that oath of office that each of us has taken serves as legitimate enough and important enough for us to take the word of one another as professional elected colleagues. And to suggest that we need cooperating evidence to support anything, I think suggests that we have distrust for a respected elected colleague. And so I am totally fine with accepting the word of one of my colleagues without having to get cooperating evidence in order for me to believe there, to use your term, excuse.
Uh, trustee Silver?
I was going to say that, you know, if, if you don't need to do any of that and you really don't have any reason to even have this reimbursement policy in. So we're saying that reimbursement is going to be into the equation. And so, and there's going to be qualifications on why you would reimburse, which is similar to travel insurance. You travel, you buy travel insurance, and you usually have reasons that you, if you don't travel, you know, because you can't, you're sick, or you, you have something, you've got to have some sort of, you know, evidence that would go along with that, that you would provide to the insurance company, so they would actually reimburse you. So it's kind of, it's a similar thing where you're just kind of having some due diligence into the process. And so I don't think it's a matter of trust because I think, you know, it's one of the ones where I think we feel pretty confident with that. I think it's better, if you're going to have a policy, then you have to have some sort of, you know, ability to enforce it and some sort of reasons why you'd be, you know, germane to be able to do something like this.
He, I'm, I'm sorry.
I actually have a.
Yes, trustee, all right.
You know, for me, this isn't about, th- this is about due diligence to the taxpayer and the public, that we are doing due diligence when there's, uh, an expense in excess of five hundred dollars that was a commitment by a trustee. So I just think we have that, that responsibility to the taxpayer to have that extra step. I.
Trustee, Vice President, uh, Theo?
I, I think trustee Sierra, um, said it so eloquently, uh, and I would second that as a single mother and a business owner, I have always felt that this prohibits individuals like myself from participating in these events. And I, I've been very honest about the fact that I have a situation that I oftentimes know at the last minute that something is not as I had planned. I don't think that my cancellation or any trustee's cancellation would be dependent upon how much it cost the park district. It would not, I would never say, well, it didn't cost him that much. I can cancel. This costs a lot. I'm going to. Um, but I think bringing third, third-party statements into public record is, it's egregious. Um, as trustee Sierra said, we took an oath of office. So it, I, I, I feel like it is disrespectful to not trust my word when it comes to something. Um, but as I've stated, this essentially makes it such that individuals like, um, trustee Sierra and I who are working, um, we, it inhibits us from even participating. So we have something coming up in September. There is no logical way that I could say without a shadow of a doubt that I would be able to attend. If I were to RSVP with that intent and something did come up, then I would have to, um, either show a third party's, I, I guess, statement, which could mean my child's father, who doesn't live in state. It could be a client that I don't think this board has a right or purry to. Um, and with that being said, I'm not going. And this board is suggesting that including this language is necessary enough that that is okay, that I just don't attend. Which now I call into question, why we're spending any of this money traveling at all? If we are so, um, concerned with, it, I'm going to try to use my words carefully. I'm not, uh, suggesting that we're not concerned with public dollars. But what I am asking us is to consider the fact that we are comfortable with some of the trustees just not able to attend, or maybe future trustees that are in similar positions not attending. Why are any of us attending? Why are we spending thousands of dollars attending something that we don't necessarily come back and have a deliberation about, we don't necessarily implement any information from? So I just hope that we are fair when it comes to what we consider fiscally responsible. And including language in this, like I said, I mean, an attorney day has mentioned, it accomplishes the goal. If you want to include that, to make your case to the board, feel free. But to demand it or put in it shall be included, it's egregious. So I, like I said, I've stated this from the very beginning, this is nothing new, but I do want to put that on record that I think if this board, which is predominantly made up of individuals, not with young children, that are not full-time employees, do not heed the perspective of individuals that are different, have different situations, that's disappointing. So that's all I'm going to say about it.
President Johnson, and if I may, and I'll stop after, I'll, I'll, I'll really be quiet after this. And to piggyback off that, for me to admit tonight that if, if what you suggested were to pass, that I would have to go back to my full-time employer, which all of you know my job, it's very public-facing, and go back to my job and say, now I have a policy that requires me, in the event that an incident happens, for you to step in after you already told me a part of my onboarding, that that is not something that you're willing to do, for, for us to continue to consider that after I basically just said that would potentially put my job at risk? Talk about the volume of that.
It limits, it limits who can serve on this board. That's, that, that is disappointing because I, I, I don't want to get into the weeds, but we do need more people like myself, more people that are working, more people that are raising children actively, and not stating that that is the only perspective, but it needs to be in these spaces. And these spaces continue to make it difficult for people like us to be in these spaces. So take that as you want, but like I said, for myself, I have to bow out of these things. It's too much financial risk, there's too much, there's too much. And then I'm accused of potentially lying about a situation that I would need to go and have a third party. That's insulting. It's insulting.
Uh, trustee, uh, Steve, what's your, your thoughts?
Well, you know, I, I actually had this, this thought similar to Ron here, uh, the other night, that really most of the stuff that we do, that we travel for, let's just say the, the boot camp or some of those smaller programs, a legislative dinner we go to, they, they really, there's really not a great price to those. The real big ticket item, I think that we're talking about, is the national or state conference, which, you know, can rent over two thousand dollars. Now, I, I think we do all trust each other. And, um, I think our fiduciary responsibility doesn't get in the way of that because our fiduciary responsibility still requires us to believe, but still, but verify. And if we, if we don't verify, a lot of the things that we do, a lot of the costs we do is the list that we have to approve every month on how things are spent, then, you know, we're really not doing our job. So, you know, the, the conference is a once-a-year event. That's, and you can still, you know, if you can prove that there was a deal, you can still not have to pay that, and it can still not prevent you from doing the things that you do in daily life. I don't think that this is a barrier to people running for our office.
It is when you include language like shall because it makes it a requirement at that point.
Okay.
And furthermore.
And you've provided.
And, and, well, again, what we do, and then, I'm, I'm sorry, I keep saying that I'm going to be quiet, but I just have to respond to points that had already been addressed, a consensus that had already been given, which means a majority of this board already agreed to the policy before us, i.e. trustee Silver, Vice President Hill, President Johnson, and myself. And then the precedent that this is setting, we had one incident, one incident. Superintendent Ross confirmed that this incident had never happened before. So in, or at least in her tenure, it has never happened before. So we've had one incident in the history of the oldest park district of the state. And as a result, we're set, we're setting policy around it, which I'm totally fine if that's the consensus of the board. But let's be clear with the precedent sense when it comes to when practice happens and policy is introduced, how that shall proceed.
Okay.
Well, point, point of. And I'm sorry, I was here at the last discussion when this all came about, so I'm kind of getting into this, you know, uh, raw on this whole information, but is this a policy that was in effect previously? The one, so this is a brand-new policy all?
Brand-new policy.
To, to be clear, we had one trustee who couldn't make it.
Which I'll, I'll go on record. I mean, I, I don't want to beat around the bush. I had a cancellation.
No, no, no.
No, no, I'll get into it because apparently, no, 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 no.
I don't care what the details, but.
I do want it, but I don't want it to be, um, someone in the room did it. I am a single mother who does not have any family in town. My daughter's father lives in Kentucky. I had a last-minute cancellation that he was not going to be able to come up and watch her. I could not get down there to take her, which would have quiet her going out of school. So I did have to make a cancellation, and it created a negative balance. And this is where we're at. So just to catch you up on, there was no policy in place, and the board thought that because this had occurred, we needed to create a policy around how to deal with that negative balance.
So this is new policy all?
Correct.
Okay. I, I thought maybe this is old policy that was being revised.
This was something that was in effect because of what had happened and occurred. And I guess in this effect, that would have required a statement.
And I can very much, I can very much appreciate your position and, you know, the flexibility because again, you know, you're a working mother with the obligations in many respects. So, uh, trustee, there's a lot of different, you know, irons that he has in the fire, you know?
But I just, I wanted to give you some context, so like I said, I, I didn't want it to be like something happened and we don't know what happened under circumstances.
I just thought this was a past policy that was being revised. This is a brand-new policy.
Correct.
Mark, um, what I was just told is the, uh, the, the policy is in place. What's new is that last paragraph.
Oh, so there is a policy already existing.
Yeah.
Kevin.
Both, both of those things are, are kind of true. I think you missed.
We've had a travel expense policy because we're required to by law.
And what did that policy say?
Well, I, I don't know that we, I'm happy to recite it for you or we can pull it up, but where I was going is this aspect of the policy, this reimbursement portion did not exist. There was no language. This portion of the policy is brand-new.
Okay.
There was a travel expense reimbursement. There was a, there was, yeah. We had a process for requesting and then per law, pre-approval of travel expenses. That was a policy. This is an entirely new discussion regarding reimbursement. So I just want to be clear that both of the things you said were, were true.
Okay.
And, and.
But the reimbursement part was a wonder. I thought that that was already in place, but it's not. This is new, additional to the, the, uh.
Emily, could you explain, you, last, at our last meeting, you explained that we have to have something in place?
Well, we talked about, we talked about the, the ways that. Well, we talked about, we talked about the, the ways that that could be like, like handled, right? If, if that, so, so the example I believe that we gave was that, for example, like airfare, right? Until we put those requirements in place that we have to buy the non-refundable ticket, we have always purchased the lowest cost ticket. That goes to a person, right? Like that's reserved in your name, not in the park district's name, so there are potentially benefits received by individuals if there's not some policy for how that is handled. We are not able to, we're not able to get a refund at a certain point, right, in that situation? So we, this has been a process that has gone on for several months, I think we're close to six months at this point, looking at what other, what other park districts have in their policy. There was very limited language out there where, where park districts have put that language in place, but there was some concern that that could, especially where that benefit transfers to you as an individual, that that could be perceived as compensation. So there are, there are, there were some challenges to that, that made this a difficult position for everybody, and it would, the policy was silent. And it is a, it is something that I hope we never use it, right? But the direction that we received at the time was that we needed to close that loop after, after the series of events that we all experienced together.
So to clarify too, because I think Joyce's question is very important. The question was, did Emily suggest or say that we basically need this policy? And Emily just very eloquently described that there was a conversation on a board level about setting a framework, how that framework is set was up for interpretation by the board.
There was concern raised by staff because it puts staff in a very, very difficult position, and that's an ongoing conversation that we've had at this level. When there is not policy that directs how that should be handled, then staff is put in a very difficult position trying to either recover costs or to, you know, address accounts payable or whatever it might be. And in this space, in order to close that loop, the direction was, and this was written primarily by board members, to close that loop so that there was no doubt about what happened in those situations, and there was protection when there were legitimate reasons why people couldn't go. We want people to be a part of that, we want people to have those experiences, but we also don't want to expend dollars and then not be able to either recover them or have that be handled like consistently. When you have policy, it's much more consistently applied, and that was our, that was our conversation at the time with the board that was sitting when this first started.
So, but the policy, just to clarify, actually, let me ask a question first. Has this board given you a directive before or set an expectation before that we did not have to codify a policy in order for you to carry that out?
In this case, the conversation was with policy, staff could enforce that. Without policy, there was no real way for us to enforce that or to address it in a way that was deemed fair by everybody.
So, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that, but my question again is, has this board given
I don't really want to be on the witness stand.
I, I know you don't, but, you know, it comes with your role about having a conversation and dialogue, so this board can make a decision. And so I'm asking a very fair question, which is, has this board ever given you, the staff, a directive? And expected that directive to be carried out without us having it codified?
Yes, and it is very difficult, and we have now since said that doesn't work. So when we had code of ethics issues and everything else, whether it was how many tickets you got, or whatever the question was, we were asked as staff to be in a position that this board determined was not a position that it was fair to put staff in to police the board. The board needs to police each other, and that is ultimately the goal of this policy, as I understand the processes we've gotten to today.
So the answer is, if there's a way for the, us to accomplish what you just described without it being policy?
No, that's why we are at policy, because it didn't work. When we were asked to try to address some of those different issues that did not work well for staff, and staff was put in very, very difficult positions. As your employee, to try to get you to do something you don't want to do, it didn't work. And so we agreed then that code of ethics was put into place, all those other pieces were put into place that are codified policy, so that it was clear that the board, when staff are all held to policy, rather than it being something that had significant amounts of discretion, that would put staff in a difficult spot with the board.
Okay, so you're saying the practice didn't work, but again
The practice didn't work, and so we were, we, we then moved to trying to put things into policy.
So the practice didn't work, but again, the question is, the answer is yes, that there's a way to get it done without it being codified.
Not that we found that was successful.
In the practice.
Correct.
Thank you.
So
Go ahead.
I'm kind of in a difficult position here, because I feel like that if you really need to have a policy, and it sounds like we're saying that we need this kind of policy in, in play, then in order to be able to have a policy, you have enforcement mechanism, and this is the enforcement mechanism. So I, so I hear what trustee Hill and what trustee Sierra are saying here, and I, and I empathize with that. But it sounds like if we're gonna put a policy in place, we need something that has at least enough language on it that has some ability to make this thing, you know, fly, if you will. So I, so that's kind of where
Just to clarify, we're talking about the struck language that we discussed at the last meeting, I'm trying to pull it up, I'm sorry. And it was basically decided that if you wanted to include third party documentation to support whatever the statement was, you have the ability to do that, but you were not required to do that.
Correct.
And so I think what we're delivering, not on having a policy and not having documentation stating what happened, just the requirement that it should include whatever corroborating evidence is necessary. That's what we're, just to kind of clarify exactly what we're discussing.
I think And all I'm asking is that we have a distinction at a certain financial level, and you can quibble with me if $500 is the wrong number, but we need to have a distinction between, this is a minor thing, in which case the, everything's, because everything is as it was, you know, if it's less than $500, we're, we're back at the original. Basically, we're, we're looking at the, the paragraph with the struck language. And all I'm asking is that, once you reach a high level, a high enough level of, of of, of a loss to the district, that we, then we bring in the additional corroborating, the requirement for the additional corroboration.
And what I'm saying in response is, $1 is just as important, just as important as $500. And so I'm saying that that, the threshold that you set, for lack of better terms, doesn't Yeah, I'm happy you interrupted me, because I, no, I'm happy, because I was gonna have the wrong choice of words, to be honest. Whether it's $1 or $500 is important. Point number one. And point number two, like Vice President Hill just said, and Attorney Day has already confirmed, the policy as presented gives the opportunity for the trustee to submit third party documentation in the event that they choose to submit third party, party documentation. And if they don't choose to submit third party documentation, then they still have to go on the record in written form and say that I missed this event for X, Y, and Z reason. And then this, that information is still presented to the board, and the board still has to take a vote on whether or not we're gonna reimburse it. So the policy as written basically says, doesn't matter if it's $1 or $500, all the money is important. And then what it also says is that if you want to, you can submit third party documentation. And then it goes on to say that even if you do or don't, it will still get presented to this board to be voted on. And finally, once the board has it for consideration, the board still has the ability to approve or deny whether it be a $1 reimbursement or a $500 reimbursement. And so what we're saying is that the policy as written accomplishes what you're trying to get done. The only difference is, is you're saying that $500 is more important than one, or $500 is more important than 50. And then what the difference is, is you're saying that the trustee shall then therefore requiring us to involve a third party. After I just told you specifically that if and when that were to be passed, the first thing I'm gonna have to do is go back to my employer and say, hey, how do you feel about this? And if they have a problem with it, I then have to have a conversation about what does employment look like for me in this establishment? And what I'm hearing from you is, hey, I empathize for you, it really doesn't matter.
Okay. What I would like to do, since this was amended, and I didn't know this was coming.
It, it wasn't amended, President Johnson.
No, there was a broad, it was a motion to amend it, wasn't it?
Kevin Day have a
Yes.
This may be a help, President Johnson, so we have, we have a couple of issues before the board. One is park district policy. Park districts has established policy, and you all may correct me if I'm wrong, that we have it in strategy. It goes to a first reading, and then there's a second reading where a vote is taken. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I did watch it, because I can't help myself. And at the last meeting, I do not believe there was any discussion, any motion for an amendment, it was passed through in the first reading. The entire principle behind that policy is to avoid substantive amendments when you're going to vote on a policy. We can tell by the level of discussion this evening that this would be clarified, I think fairly objectively, as a substantive amendment to this policy. So there was a motion made, it was seconded. That's the first motion on the table to approve it, as presented tonight.
Correct.
There was a second motion to then amend it, consistent with trustee Silver's comments. That was seconded, so motion to amend, right, seconded. As the initial motion, you denied the request to amend your motion, which is your right to do. So now we still have two motions, had you accepted, which you're not obligated to do, then it just becomes kind of one motion, right? Everyone's on the same page. So if we want to take a vote, which there's two motions pending, so I would recommend, the first motion is, are we going to amend? However, the motion is amended and send it back consistent with policy to the strategy conversation, and we start this process again. The amendment, consistent with policy, is not going to have the impact of approving it tonight with this amendment.
Right.
If the motion to amend fails, your motion is on the table, and then we vote on your motion as presented.
But the order in which we vote is my motion first, and the motion that Silver had
The motion to amend has to be first, because it's been motioned and, and seconded.
After a motion has already been made?
Correct, people have the ability to make a, a motion to amend, the initial, you know, I guess, motion maker has the ability to accept or reject that amendment.
Got it.
You can then force your, your vote, you know what I mean, on that? The board as a whole determines whether or not they want to consider that, that amendment.
No, I'm not trying, I, I want to be clear, I, and I don't mean to pin a needle, but we know this is a political space. I'm not trying to force anything, I'm trying to adhere to previous practice, so similar to the July 3rd conversation, when a motion was made to approve, or no, I'm sorry, when a motion was made to deny, and then there was attempt to amend that motion, we followed the order in which those motions were made. And so I'm just asking, based on previous practice, what's the order in which we
One, one, I, I don't necessarily recall the exact circumstances that you're talking about, two, that I would, from what you're saying, completely different sets of circumstances. This is a policy.
Okay, got you.
And, and consistent with our practice on how things are amended. That, that's, that's my reading of Robert's Rules of Order, you guys can take it or leave it, but that, that is my recommendation. Is to address the motion, since he has not accepted the motion to amend, you take care of that, and then you address the motion on the table.
I did want to add something though, to trustee Sierra and trustee Hill. I too am still, I run a, I manage a hotel, still. Also, I don't like the idea that I have to contact my employer to get information or to co-sign for me if I decided, but I'm not gonna attend an event if I can't go. I had a fire the last time, that I couldn't, you know, I just, my house was, and, uh, do I need to go and get the fire department to verify that, or, or do I have to call my employer? Now, I have a, a problem with getting my employer involved in my political, my, my community stuff. I just, I just don't like that. I don't like that ideal, to have to go and have them sign some type of document of some sort to, to prove that I couldn't, or to say something I couldn't attend an event. So with that, I won't be supporting, because I don't think that's right. I agree with, when people have children and kids, our kids are all grown. I think, I just thought that the, the board members or whoever should be able to, if you did get a flight ticket or whatever, that money is not lost. It has to be repaid, or you use it for another, you know, you get the money back to the partners, it's not something that they give away. So, but I don't know, this, I, I just don't like the idea of involving third party people when we decided to run for office. I just don't, I don't like that.
I'm so sorry, President, can I? Also, going to the administrative practice, and this is something that Emily said earlier in the conversation, about the practice to purchase the lowest ticket, which isn't a requirement, that's a practice. And so a point that had been made in previous discussion to what trustee Silver has already said earlier, just buy a refundable ticket.
That's what we're going to do now, that's what the policy changed.
Okay, and I get that, but the point that I'm being, the point that I am making is, it doesn't take the policy to get that done, we could have addressed that in the practice. More so, the language as it pertains to providing a doctor's note, that's assuming that people have healthcare. So what if I get sick and I don't have healthcare? And the requirement says that if I claim that I'm sick, and it's over, if it's $501 that I have to get a doctor's note, now I have to pay whatever back on top of paying the doctor's visit when I don't have healthcare. This policy assumes everything anti-commitment to D E I A, the policy language. It's not equitable, it's not fair, it's not diverse, it's not accessible. But we all claim around this horseshoe that we're committed to that.
Is there a reason why you brought this forth, Mr. Silver? I was just wondering.
I got to thinking about the
The language
Going back and thinking about how travel was, was managed within Caterpillar, I got to thinking about it, that we need to be, you know, it's not that I'm not, we, we trust each other around the horseshoe here. But going back to something that Joyce, trustee Harant had said, was that we also need this to be good fiduciary responsibility to the voters.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
So you're stating that this is for the voters to have documentation as to why?
Yes, so
Which, does that seem like it oversteps bounds?
No.
Wow, okay.
Okay. Okay, the discussion has been made. Now, to go back to strategy to, to revisit this, we have to do the vote first, though, is that correct? We have to do a vote now?
On this I would recommend that you vote on the motion to amend this, which was seconded. And the effect of that motion would be to amend it on the floor and send it all the way back to the beginning of this program. It would not approve this policy change with this amendment this evening. That is contrary to established policy, for the exact reason that I think we've all experienced here today.
I mean, I appreciate that, but let, let, let's be real, that most people around this horseshoe didn't know that process point. And also, trustee Silver, is that, and when I'm saying most people, I'm referring to the trustees, and also trustee Silver. I appreciate the notion that you just made as to the point I should bring in this forth, but you were an employee of the park, of Caterpillar. We're not employees of the park district, we don't receive a dime to be here. And so for that to be your reason to bring this forth, just doesn't make sense.
Trustee Silver, we, we need to get a vote down here.
Time to make that.
A point to, to trustee Silver's amendment here, is that if, in fact, we go with the original wording and not put the $500, you know, clause in there, it, but you have to vote to either say you're going to, you know, go back and look at whether or not they should reimburse or not. I think it does the same thing, you could basically look at what they're submitting.
or not. I think it does the same thing. You could basically look at what they're submitting, and if you don't feel that it's appropriate at that point in time, then you could basically vote it down. And then it would be something that you're getting the same effect, you know, in the long run, which is getting the fiduciary responsibility in there, because the board is going to vote on whether or not they should be able to, you know, cancel and not have to reimburse. I mean, it'd be easier if you had some language in there that said you need to do that. But as we've heard, there are extenuating circumstances that can cause issues with getting the information, or even having the information, if it's immediate, you know, fire, you know, you know, basically, there's going to be, well, I guess you get a fire report. But, so, so with that in mind, you know, I think with the vote on there, I think it does kind of fulfill the fiduciary side of the equation. Am I wrong in thinking that for some reason?
I don't disagree.
Trustee Silver.
It's just, I think it's clearer if we include it in the policy and not have to go take it to a vote where, you know, you may or may not be reimbursed for your expenses, depending on what the, what the board feels. And if you have it in black and white, then it's clear.
It's always going to be, even with the third party, it's still be a vote.
The difference is, then you can look at the extenuating circumstances and judge that with vote, rather than having it, you know, definitely, you know, hard written into the policy. So.
All right. Okay. So we go with the vote, start?
What are we voting on? Your motion to amend.
Yes.
You don't want to amend the amendment.
Seconded is motion to amend, correct?
Yes.
President Johnson, please take the vote on that motion, which again, would not approve the policy tonight with that amendment. It would start this entire process back over.
Roll call.
Trustee Harant?
Aye.
Trustee Montes?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
No.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slaver?
Upstate.
Vice President Hill?
Name.
President Johnson?
No.
Does, the motion to amend does not pass.
All right. The original motion. Roll call.
Trustee Harant?
Aye.
Trustee Montes?
No.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
No.
Trustee Slaver?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Yep.
Okay. Nine D. Amendment of trustees to standing committees, receiving file. Anybody having questions? Okay. The lease agreement for your players theater?
契約契約 agreement with Peoria Players expires in July of 2025. This proposed lease agreement is fairly similar to the last one, except it has been updated to reflect changes in insurance and indemnification. Music licensing, lease payments, includes a three-year term with a single three-year extension. This lease has been reviewed by legal counsel and the Peoria Players Board.
I just have a question, just clarification. In, in the rental amount, it's not really clear that, is the, is the rental amount of $1,750, is that per month? It doesn't really say that.
Looks like it's for the whole period.
It doesn't say like, and the total year is X dollars. I mean, that's the way usually I've seen leases, where it's.
Well, it, it does say in paragraph one that rent is payable in equal monthly installments.
Yeah, but it doesn't say what.
Seventeen fifty.
It says seventeen fifty.
Divided by 12.
It says seventeen fifty for the period July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, which makes it sound like, I can rent this place for seventeen fifty for the whole year, which is great.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's a way to, is that just a technical?
I think it's a clarification. We can, they understand what they're paying. So if we can modify the language and you approve it with language that says per month for the period.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have a separate question. Am I correct, I can't find it on this lease, but am I correct in my understanding that every time Peoria Players wants to distribute alcohol, that they have to get permission from the park district? Yeah, I just don't know where it's at. But I know, I know I read it in here.
That was handled in our separate agreement, I believe. Because that requires special insurance.
I found it. It's page nine. Other terms, term five, leasing may not sell alcohol on the premises without prior written consent from leasing.
Correct. So we do a separate annual, they tell it, they give us their schedule.
Got it. And you approve it all at once?
You do, actually, I believe.
Okay. I just, I was wondering about the administrative component of that. So instead of approving it every single time that they're selling liquor, I'm hearing that.
They give us the, they give us the calendar, right? Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what we do with other facilities as well.
Got it.
Like cornstalk.
And that's where I was going next, that it adheres to our practice that we have with cornstalk.
Sure does.
Thank you. President Johnson, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Question?
Oh, yeah, I approve with the changes of the, whatever everyone said.
Monthly payment, yes.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Trustee Harant?
Aye.
Trustee Montes?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slaver?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Nine D, contract agreement, Top Tracer Golf Learning Center?
Staff recommends approving the attached contract with Top Golf, the Top Tracer ball tracking and gaming software at the Golf Learning Center. Holy God, I scared myself it was so long.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I just have a question. Becky, how's the project cost tracking for Golf Learning Center?
Good so far, still within budget. We're getting close to the end, so it's kind of, a lot of costs are coming in and a lot of minor changes as we finish things up.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a question as well. Just looking at all, rather than reading through all of this material here, we're not giving away our baby or anything like that, right? It's.
No, the attorneys reviewed it, and Carrie was also involved in reviewing it.
As long as the attorneys are okay with it, I'm good, just.
Any experience at the?
My fourth son is not being given away this conceit. Very, very proud.
There's just so much.
It's, it's very extensive, and I would invite Superintendent Ross to correct me if I'm wrong, but I did review the agreement. My comment was that it is not, I recommend that the board approve it, is the best way to say it, in an affirmative fashion. The negotiation powers of the district, given this technology, given the importance to GLC, we, we don't have a whole lot of ability to negotiate. There, the issues that Superintendent Ross and I identified that we felt were worth negotiating, we did attempt to negotiate in the park district's favor.
Okay.
This is the agreement that they are comfortable with.
Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Harant?
Aye.
Trustee Montes?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slaver?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the bid on Playground, Columbia Playground?
Staff recommends approving or accepting the bid totaling $314,407.40 from Game Time for the purchase and installation of the new playground and servicing at Columbia Park. This is part of the city grant that we were given to do some renovations at Columbia Park, where staff presented three different options for the playground and had a survey monkey that went out, as well as onsite, where we talked to different community members and received feedback, and they determined that option three with a climber ended up being the, the best option. So staff recommends approving it.
I will move adoption.
Second.
I do have a, I want to, this is a great thing for Columbia Park and the Neighborhood Association that really asked for this, and I'm glad that we could deliver. My, I just have a question. So the diagram is, is it in the area where the current playground is? So the old playground will be?
Removed.
Taken off, and, and the shelter will be where?
On the right side, kind of in the clouded area.
Okay.
Like right now.
All, all on our property.
Correct, yep.
Which brings to my mind, do we have any knowledge of?
Not a word. We have followed up a couple of times with no response. We will try again.
We're, I mean, is there?
Knowledge of what I'm.
It's a weird, it is a weird.
The Quest property.
Got it.
It's a weird thing between the city and the school district. So we just need to figure out, we've, we've talked to both. We just need to follow up again and see if they've made any movement on that. I will do that this week.
Yeah, because I'm, yeah, good, okay. Thank you.
Joyce, would you mind, because I don't think our two new trustees are on the board, just give us some context about the Quest property?
Columbia Park, the portion, but it's where the, the library is.
Right.
So the library is property. We have a piece of that area that ends sort of halfway up. Then there's a strip the city owns that was the old alley, as I understand, and then, is that north or was, I never, the direction's north, and to the next street is owned by the school district. And before it was Quest, and now Quest isn't, doesn't exist. And back a year or so ago, I was in a conversation, and I learned that the school district had different kinds of properties that it was looking at to divest of. And we had been trying to reach Quest and never got any response to ask whether or not they would want, because I, as I understand it, we just mow that and have no agreement to mow it. We just do it for the school district, so.
I can show you the map after the meeting. I pulled it up.
So it would just be sort of giving us the ability as the park district to control that whole park. We wanted to, you know, have, have an event or whatever, we'd have to go through so many hoops to.
In practice, we take care of it, and we use it, so we might as well own it.
Yeah.
And Matt, we just mow our side of the creek there, right? We don't go across that answer.
Okay, did we take a vote? Roll call.
Trustee Harant?
Aye.
Trustee Montes?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slaver?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a couple of calendar of consent items. Anybody want to talk about any of them, or any more information?
I'll, I'll move to approve. I do want to thank Emily and the team for 10 D specifically. Am I, am I off? Is that the Woodruff baseball field fence? Okay. So I know that that was a conversation that had been brought up by some of the players down at the Woodruff Diamond. And so I just think all of our projects have just been very impressive when it comes to the community responsiveness. So thank you.
Thank you. In the back, you've got the whole plant. Becky's team is all in the house tonight. So some new faces. Do you want to introduce them? Might as well embarrass them if they've made it this long.
Sure, if you guys could stand up, that'd be great. We got Spencer, and then Yogi and the two new planners.
New planner?
They're both planners.
Both planners.
And then, of course, we have Mary and Mike. And Mary, she's been instrumental on the Columbia Playground project, so she's been doing a lot of work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have any pending business?
No, sir.
Yes.
Oh, what? Oh, yeah, you get a ballot.
Is there anything fun calendar?
Did you vote?
Did we vote?
No.
What was the vote we did on, oh, that?
Yeah.
We voted on the playground.
Oh, we did.
And we talked about.
The walkway replacement.
We need that little sign.
Thank you. That's wire day.
Okay, okay. Trustee Harant?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Trustee Montes?
She's taking a vote on.
Trustee Montes. Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slaver?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, pending business?
Nope.
And communications? Anybody want to make any comments? Other business?
No.
Any, whether, do we have any action steps to review? Is there a motion to adjourn?
We do have one action step from the police report. The chief is going to work on bringing comparative data moving forward.
Oh, and the other one.
Yep, yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, trustee Sierra. Motion to adjourn?
I move, so I move.
I'll second.
Just a reminder, your reconvening strategy upstairs.
We will be reconvening upstairs, strategy. Roll call.
Harant? Aye.
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 Aye, thank you.